Devola.
Here.
Heil.
Here.
Livia Wright.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Thompson.
Here. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Director Heil?
Yeah, there had been a couple of emails, notifications of folks who had possible updates for the AEC resolution. So I don't know if we want to move that to discussion and go into that in more detail, or if everybody feels comfortable with voting yes or no to the updates, we could move it for action.
Yeah, I remember that you had provided a few updates, but Jamie Lynn, when are these due to CASB?
So the due date to CASB is July 18, and we have a working, or we have a regular meeting on July 10. So we would still be able to discuss it today and move it for action on that date.
Director Devola?
I am not opposed to having the discussion and voting on it today. I don't know if anyone else has an opinion on that. I'm okay with voting on it today.
Director Schmidt?
I'm okay with voting on it today as well.
Okay.
Can I get a vote, please?
Devola.
Aye.
Heil.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye, and that passes. Okay, we are on to 2024-2025 Supplemental Budget Resolution. Can I get a motion for action item 4.1?
I move to approve the 2425 Supplemental Budget Resolution as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Can I get a vote, please?
Devola.
Aye.
Heil.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye, and that passes. We are on to the Interfund Borrowing Resolution for 2024-25. Can I get a motion for action item 4.2?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 Interfund Borrowing Resolution as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, can I get a vote?
Devola.
Aye.
Heil.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye, and that passes. We are on to 4.3, Use of Beginning Fund Balance Resolution for 2024-2025. Can I get a motion for action item 4.3?
I move to approve the Use of Beginning Fund Balance Resolution for 2024-2025 as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All right, can I get a vote?
Devola.
Aye.
Heil.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye, and that passes. Okay, item 4.4, Superintendent Contract of Employment. Can I get a motion for action item 4.4?
I move to approve the Superintendent's Employment Contract as presented and authorize the Board President to execute the agreement on behalf of the Board of Education.
Second. Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Devola.
Aye.
Heil.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt?
No.
Thompson.
Aye, and that passes. We are on to item 4.5, Proposed Revisions to Policy AD. Can I get a motion for action item 4.5?
I move to approve the Proposed Revisions to Policy AD.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, Director Schmidt?
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, in the future, this had like multiple bullet points, so it was really hard to read and really hard to cite. I'm wondering if we can consider using numbers instead of bullet point dots, maybe? That's just a suggestion. I also like the newest revisions to bullet point number 17 in the educational philosophy statement. Parents and staff need to work together on this to ensure parental rights come first. And that is all.
Director Devola?
I also wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that change and had an opportunity to look over it before voting on it tonight. And I'm not opposed to having it numbered.
Do you want to talk about, because just so you know what Director Devola is talking about is there was a sentence that was a little bit inarticulate that she streamlined. And so that's when I said, well, go ahead and put it in. And Mike, I should have put up forward too, any of the proposed revisions to the AEC. But if anyone has any questions about the streamlining of that sentence?
You're just talking about the green, correct? The green and red change, yeah, though it's actually far better. I had a problem with the way it was written before.
Okay, and is there any other discussion? I like your suggestions for future revisions. But if there's no other discussion, can I get a vote?
Devola.
Aye.
Heil.
No.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye, and that passes. Okay, we are on to 4.6, AEC Resolution to Submit to CASB. Can I get a motion for action item 4.6?
I move to approve submitting the AEC Resolution to CASB.
Second. Any other discussion, Director Heil?
Yeah, so the board was in receipt of two whereas clauses that I was suggesting to add because I think that we have missed two of the most important arguments in favor of this. One is that the state already recognizes that AECs are different in how they evaluate them on the school performance framework. But then when their data is rolled into our district performance framework, it's unmodified. And then the other argument, if I can pull it up, was that essentially it penalizes districts who have AECs and it discourages districts who don't have them from opening them to the detriment of the students who could benefit from them. So I thought those were important arguments that we should articulate before CASB. So if the board agrees, I will give you a properly worded, a motion to amend, and we can add those.
Okay, Director Devola?
I agree that we should add those two bullet points, so I'm in favor of that. And then I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to look at the email that Lynette, thank you, Lynette sent to all of you. That was actually from me. I'm not sure if that was clear. But the therefores are targeted with the board, and this is supposed to be from CASB. So my recommendation is to strike out the words "the board" and say "CASB", and then, yeah.
So that would also apply to be it further resolved. And there's two other be it further resolves that mentions the board instead of CASB. And so my thought would be, this is not a policy where we're looking at a double read, this is a resolution. And so I think if we could make those, I'm in favor of making those changes with the two whereas and modifying the board to CASB. Director Livia Wright?
Well, and I think where we kind of ran into a problem, so like, there were two separate things that were supposed to happen out of the last meeting. One was a board resolution specific to our situation with GOAL that would be used as a board resolution to then, from a district position, lobby legislatively. That was supposed to be a resolution that we would then vote on and have you sign as Board President. The second is submission to CASB, which was a separate piece that would then be where we removed reference to GOAL and talked about AECs in general, because GOAL is a flashpoint, will be a flashpoint at CASB. AECs, the importance of AECs and providing districts a way in which they are no longer punished for a willingness to accept an AEC and to start schools that serve at-risk populations within their communities without the risk of it punishing their district is an important thing to advocate for educationally, that we should be able to get many districts to understand. Especially because it's smaller districts who may want to do something. So if you think in rural communities, a small AEC there could actually, like, if we have an impact as a very, as a large district, imagine what that does to a small district in a rural community and the likelihood of them being able to sponsor something that could serve regionally in their community, an at-risk population, maybe one that was designed to target migrant students, for example, in agricultural areas. No district is going to separate that population out to provide specialized, a special school that can meet their needs if, in creating that disaggregated school, it destroys their district rating, right? And there's a high risk of that. The smaller your district is, the higher the risk of that happening. And we see it on a larger scale here because of the AEC we authorized. But I think that's maybe where the mix-up is, because I don't know that when we submit something to CASB, we sign it the same way, right? Like, I don't think.
And I think what we could do, because our original resolution, which was carried over from last year with just the modification on the years on it, would be our resolution for District 49. That is not as time-sensitive, and I know that was unanimously moved forward, and it was unanimously passed last year. So I think we could add that into our next meeting for the district one. But I'm in favor of making the changes to the one that has to go to CASB with the corrections, the two whereas, and then changing board to CASB on this resolution, because it does fit in with our cultural compass of value all people. Like Director Livia Wright said, if you have a district that would not want to take in an alternative education campus for the fear of how it would hit them, and we know how it has hit us when people have falsely used those numbers as our graduation rates, because they take the statewide alternative education campus and combine it with our brick and mortar schools to take us from a graduation rate in the 90s down to 56. And so I like the changes. Director Devola?
Yeah, upon second read, the last two, be it further resolves, might not actually be pertinent to CASB, so I'm in favor of actually striking both of those. And then, of course, we would remove the approved and adopted this 25th day, and Lori Thompson, District 49, all of that would be removed.
Although, the second, be it further resolved, that CASB encourages district leaders, schools' principals, and all education and support staff to reach out to their local legislatures to support such legislation, I think, I don't know that that would need to be struck.
I don't know that that fits what CASB, so I think it's important to look at what CASB's general form is. And I don't think that they take a position that instructs school district staff members. And so I think that when we're submitting something to CASB, we want to be careful to follow their form in terms of what is, what's consistent with how we, how they, how their resolution process works and how those are presented. And Mike has something.
Okay, Director Heil?
And so it was this part of the presentation, and just to let everybody who's watching at home know, you know, we shared information with each other via email, but it was just as a presentation of something that is going to be talked about, and now we are first having this discussion, right? So that's how we honor open meetings while also, you know, informing each other and being able to be prepared to have this conversation. So when, my edits can just be, you know, simply incorporated, I dictate the change. But these other changes that we're talking about, and they are good points, but they're a little bit fuzzier. And so that was why I was suggesting that we might, you know, push this in, have this discussion, but then bring it back for action on July 10.
I think we could also get a motion for this resolution as amended. And so I don't know that we couldn't take action tonight.
Right. The question is, how do we frame that amendment?
Director Devola?
Well, could we have, well, we could also, we can get it, so because we have board docs, and we have Lynette here, who is amazing, Lynette could actually, you know, go into the draft document here and delete those things that we just said delete, and add the things Mike said, and then present the amended document, correct? And then we refer to the amended document in our motion, and that does it. Is that correct, Mr. Miller?
So Brad Miller speaking, yes, this is a resolution, we can do these sorts of amendments on the fly here, but to Mike's point, I don't want to overtax Lynette. If she's able to get those done, I'd like to have a reading, you know, a visual of this that you're voting on.
Oh, 100%. She can refresh, we can put it up, and I can actually read a motion with the, I can read the whole resolution as the amendment in the motion, and then we're okay, I think. Because we're talking about basic, we're deleting anywhere where it says be it further resolved, that first be it further resolved down is just deleted.
And then we add in the one above it.
So let's go, let's help her edit. So first, just do that. And when she's got that done, let me know.
Give her one minute, give her one minute.
Yep.
Yeah, Lynette, no, no pressure, we're not all looking at you.
No, no, no.
So before we get too far into that, though, I'd like to point out that you raised the very good point that we should be looking at how CASB presents resolutions and matching that in our conclusion. And I think that that's the problem here. I don't want to pressure, you know, Lynette in public on a time crunch. I'd rather we take that time, bring it back, look at it, make the comparison, make the edits, and then just bring it back for action.
Director Schmidt?
I agree with Mike Heil, thank you.
Been there in seven, well, actually 11 years. I did it a long time ago, well, no, it's been five years. I did, I was the CASB rep for six years, so, but they changed how they were doing it my last year there. So I don't know if they do whereas statements or if they do just a, so we really should, it's just that resolution statement that you would have, and I think the whereases would be in the argument that the delegate presents, probably correct?
Director Devola?
Yeah, I was the delegate this past session. So yes, they usually do not have the whereas statement. So I agree with Mike Heil, actually. We should probably rework it, stick it with our July meeting so that we can task administration to take the whereases out, which is basically one that...
Okay, so that's easy to do, because then I can just withdraw my motion.
Okay.
So that happened, everybody. We have it on video, no take backs.
Okay, do I have a consensus to move this to the next meeting then with the changes we have discussed? Can I have you on microphone?
Yes.
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 Yes, and that makes it unanimous and takes a little pressure off Lynette there.
It was almost done.
Okay, next up, we have Revisions to Policy GBEC. Can I get a motion for action item 4.7?
I move to approve the Revisions to Policy GBEC.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, can I get a vote? Oh, Mike, Director Heil?
I just want to say thank you to administration for, and Mr. Miller for hearing my concerns and coming back on a pretty quick turnaround.
Okay, can I get a vote?
Devola.
Aye.
Heil.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye, and that passes. Let's see where we are here. Come on, baby. Okay, we are on to discussion item 6.1, Policy JICJ, Student Use of Cellphones and Other Personal Electronic Devices. Now, I know earlier Director Schmidt asked me for like three and a half minutes, so just so you know, any board member who wants it, you can have up to three and a half minutes for discussion on this topic. So Lynette, can you set the time clock real quick? Oh, that's right, we should have Nancy, Dr. Lamont present it first. Sorry, I read it, that's been presented, you know, and, okay, go ahead.
Dr. Nancy Lamont, Deputy Superintendent and Executive Director for Individualized Education, bringing you a new policy, JICJ. This is the use of cellphones and other electronic devices within our schools. We have been operating under guidelines for the last year based upon what we're anticipating from Colorado Legislature, and also based upon feedback from principals, Student Board of Representatives, Zone Superintendents. We have moved this into policy, of which multiple, again, stakeholders have reviewed and provided feedback. So this is the first draft of the policy, JICJ. What questions can I answer for you?
Do we have any questions about this policy so far? We're just going to start off on discussion, or Director Livia Wright? Okay, Director Schmidt?
Okay, so this policy says, "The Board of Education believes that personal electronic devices may be useful tools for students in the educational environment and can play a vital role during emergency situations." I do not believe that at all. "Personal electronic devices are a major distraction for our educators. The policy should be a firm stance on keeping our students' learning environments free of these distractions. I believe that students have access to a one-to-one device in D49, which is a useful educational tool. But students don't need cellphones. When we provide one-to-one, we are also providing the advantage of filters to keep students safe from the pitfalls of social media and the cyber world. This proposed policy falls short of achieving digital protection and safety for our students. When we allow cellphones, we are not just giving students access to the outside world, we're giving the outside world access to our students. During an emergency, cellphones can pose a big problem for security and, security teams and police. Students phone home, parents naturally come to pick their students up, and now there is a major traffic jam in the parking lot that emergency vehicles need access to for the safety of the students. All those calls can also overload cellphone communication systems as well as the front office staff. In addition, the beeping, buzzing of the phones can alert the person who means harm to the location of students, putting them in danger. We should confer with security on this point. The policy should be district-wide, and the responsibility of enforcement should not turn our educators into cellphone police with no clear direction. Teachers don't want to be police. There should be no room to offer inconsistent discretion across the district. Our staff should be able to say, in D49, our board... Our staff should be able to say, "In D-49, our board has given us a clear, consistent, district-wide policy on cell phones." Doing so takes the onus off professional educators, and puts it squarely on the administrators and the board where it belongs. Since becoming phone-based, kids are being harmed in fundamental ways: social deprivation, sleep deprivation, attention fragmentation, and addiction. These kids are addicted to their phones. They think about them all the time. They give up time with friends to be on them. They are on, they are on them half the night. We have policies that keep addictive drugs and alcohol out of the schools. Why is this addiction any different? Important policies need to be given proper time and consideration. Being in a hurry to get this done before the first day of school is a reach. Other districts took a couple of months to gather stakeholder input, speak with security personnel, and conduct focus groups regarding cell phones. If we do not, then we have not done our job completely. At this time, I would like to ask for a board consensus for me to work with one other board member, the custodian of the draft, staff members, and anyone else that is interested in giving their input. Thank you.
Real quick, I just want to make one point. We actually did have focus groups, and we had input from Student Board of Representatives, parents, the principals. We talked to the zone superintendents. So, we actually did have some of that pulled together, just as a point of clarification. Director Heil, you want to give him?
Yeah, so, the policy clearly states that anybody, any student pre-K through eight cannot use their devices on school premises during the designated school day. So, they can't use them, period. So, there's a carve-out for nine through 12, where they can use them, but not during instructional time, unless there's, you know, the teacher has determined that there is a, you know, educational value to having them take out their phones and use them for some educational purpose. So, so, for pre-K through eight, there's already an effective ban. And for nine through 12, one of the things we have to keep in mind is that these students have a phone in their pocket because they, a parent provided it. They paid for the device. They are paying for this subscription. And so, that's their right to make that decision, whether their child should have that phone on them. As far as the security stuff, we did talk about that at the Safety and Security Open House that we had, and it was a controversial topic. There were, you know, statements that you don't want to have a phone going off, because that would alert, you know, potential, you know, harm, you know, where somebody is at. But there was also argument that in certain circumstances, when a child can text their parent, or, or call them and let them know that everything is okay, that that actually prevents the crush of cars to show up at the school and prevent first responders from, from getting access. So, it's, it's a tricky one. But I feel like we have, we got inputs from all kinds of places, plus, this has been piloted in the, we've had it in practice for the last year. And so, we've had feedback from our parents, and our students, and our educators, as this has been affecting them in the real world, and they've determined that, that it's working for them, and I don't know why we wouldn't formalize this for them.
Director Livia Wright?
So, a question first. My question is, how close is, we've been piloting something for a year. How close is this to what we were piloting?
It's relatively close. I mean, there were some additional things put in. The principals asked that they still keep some of the discretion, so we put that in. We spelled out K through eight and then nine through 12, so some of those things were kind of pulled out, but it is relatively close to what we've been piloting, or what we've been, actually not piloting, it's what we've been doing for the last year. This just puts it into policy to where, when we get questions about the use of cell phones or electronic devices, instead of saying, "We have a procedure," or "We have a process," or "We have guidelines," we can say, "We have a policy."
Which I believe was the goal of the pilot, and I appreciate, so now it is my comment time, but I appreciate that it's split, because I do think nine through 12 is a different situation. We have kids who are working, we have kids who are, my daughter, we did not buy anybody in my home a cellphone. My daughter bought one off a friend, because her RTC instructor required leadership to have one, because they had to be able to communicate with other cadets. So, it turned into a battle in my home, because we had, she circumvented our rule to meet a teacher's rule at the time. So, we had to have a conversation. But there are things students do on those phones that they need them for in between, outside of instructional time, including kids who are leaving campus for classes, leaving, and then coming back, because they attend college classes, or work-study experiences, or leaving campus for lunch. So, I appreciate that. One comment I'm going to make on the safety piece is, when my cousin was shot at Deer Creek Middle School, she was one of the two kids shot there. She is the one who survived. The way that her friend was able to provide first aid, and the way that her family knew was because her friend had a cellphone in that emergency situation. So, I, I would argue that in emergency situations, if you've trained your kid, there's a reason sometimes they need to have them, because the student who helped to save Reagan's life might not have known what to do, or if they didn't have access, and they wouldn't have been able to tell my Reagan's mom, who was stuck in an airport in December, watching the shootout on the news, that she had Reagan, and Reagan was hit, but, you know, they had it under control, and they wouldn't have been able to communicate with her dad. And so, as someone who had a family member who was shot in a school, I appreciate that that emergency, that recognition that you're not breaking the rule, and that you can use your phone in an emergency is important to me.
Director DiVola?
Yes. So, was there a board member that was assigned to work with administration on this policy?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so, that's, I find that as a problem. We, I think we should probably have had board input on the draft of this. So, I am in favor of, for consensus for Deb Schmidt's idea, to have someone be working with admin from the board. Also, there's a couple of things that I noted that needs to be a little bit stronger, such as, how will it be enforced? So, it leaves it very broadly stated that there may or may not be consequences for breaking these rules, but they're not spelled out, they're not in here, and leaving it up to the discretion of the principal could pose a problem. I did have a principal talk to me specifically about the problems of enforcement when it's not clearly defined in policy. And being able to enforce the protocol was very, very challenging at her school. So, that was something that was noted. And touring schools, I saw many, many phones, and many, many violations of this protocol, and different types of enforcement going on between schools. So, I think it needs to be very strongly stated. First violation, this is the consequences. Second violation, this is the consequences across high school level, and then K-8 level. So...
So, if this, or when this, if this policy is adopted, then there are two subsequent documents that would have to be updated. The first one would be JICDA, our Code of Conduct, in order to incorporate this policy into JICDA, our Code of Conduct. And then, along with that, our disciplinary matrix would be updated in order to incorporate this into our disciplinary matrix. So, those two things are outside of the policy, but those are two documents that are also supportive to administration, school administration, and zone superintendents.
Okay. I just thought that the wording in here makes it up to the school administrator at his or her discretion, establish and enforce an additional rules. So, that doesn't make it clear that it's, we're all going to have the same rules across the district.
So, there's a lot of things, because of autonomy at our schools, that are left to the discretion of the principal. It varies based upon the student, the circumstances surrounding the student, the circumstances surrounding the incident. That's why the disciplinary matrix are guidelines, because ultimately, it is at the principal's discretion. Do I want to suspend for one day, or for three days? Do I want to move forward with a recommendation for expulsion? And again, it depends on the situation of the student, the situation of the phone use, the situation of whatever it might happen to be. So, we do leave the discretion, which in the, in the principal's group that I led to draft this first, and there was a zone superintendent in that also, to draft this, that was their request, that they maintain some discretion over the application of discipline and how this is applied. My understanding is also that the expectations around the policy will be set by zone superintendents at their kickoff meetings. So, they will be the ones to let their schools, their zones, know that their expectation as a zone superintendent of what the, again, I'm going to use the word again, expectation is around enforcing or adhering to policy JICJ. And again, if situations come up, that would be a conversation with that zone superintendent, with other school leaders, to determine what steps are they taking. But we will offer in the disciplinary matrix guidelines that we would recommend, again, as for anything, assaults, drugs on campus, whatever it might happen to be. We would provide guidelines, so the principals have an idea of in what area, in what standard they're working within. Are they looking at one to three, three to five days? That's broken out from K to eight, or is broken out elementary and secondary.
A couple of things before we go back around. When we first launched the protocol, there was the focus group, and there was a lot of input that came in through that. But the protocol was never defined as a policy. So, what I heard from back then is, in the beginning, it was very, very well-enforced in the beginning, and then it slacked off a bit. Student Board was overwhelmingly in favor of it. They said they got more face-to-face time, and it makes sense, because there's a lot of medical information that show mental health impact due to technology addiction. So, I think that it's not a bad idea to just work a little bit, maybe with two board members, but the one thing we cannot do is ignore the voice of the community as well, and the input and the practice that they've had. Now, Director Heil and I attended Engage 49, Safety and Security, put on by our very own Dave Watson, and he did address cell tower overload. He said what was a bigger problem was parents rushing to school, and this is something I'd like to get on the record, because unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of people show up for that. And it was really valuable information, that if you are loading up the parking lot, do you think the emergency responders and ambulances can get through? So, as a parent, it's a knee-jerk reaction, fight or flight. Well, I'm fighting to get there. I want to get my kid. I want to keep him safe. And they might actually be doing the contrary at that moment. So, there are arguments that, too, in an emergency situation, for verification, because this also applies to staff, where there has to be some type of communication. So, I think that we have to have the guidelines set up, we have to have the enforcement set up, but I don't, I, I'm not too hard on the fact that the protocol began to slip, because it was a protocol, it was a test run, and it wasn't yet a policy, but I could see areas where this could be improved a bit. The other thing is, oh, like, for instance, there's something in here about short trips and extracurricular activities. Well, extracurricular would be sporting events, plays, dramas, other areas, and I don't want to get so restrictive that anytime we have a school event, that nobody can have a cellphone out for those things, especially not for trips, for photos and things that you use a phone for these days. But I think overall, the more we keep it out of instructional time, it's good. Older kids, I don't even mind if they have access to their phones during lunchtime. So, if the board would be open to that, I would be happy to work with Director Schmidt, to work with you, to see if there's anything else that we could get input on, because this is a discussion item. And so, this is a time to bring other information together. Director, well, I'm going to go this way, because Director Schmidt had her flower up first, so we'll come back this way. Director Schmidt?
Okay. For reasons I'm not going to go into, I was not at the security meeting. Also, I have some, kind of some questions. You had said there were two places that you needed to change policy. In waypoints, on page eight, under Student Responsibilities, bullet point two, that cellphone uses, usage disrupts the classroom. So, you're saying it disrupts the classroom. Well, not you, but, you know, the waypoint says that. I want to know, are phones banned on state testing days?
I can't answer that question. I don't know.
Okay.
As far as I know, there are no phones allowed within a testing room, but are they banned from campus? I don't believe so. They're just not allowed in the testing room. The only thing you can take into the testing room, to my understanding, is your pencil, and if you're using a pencil still, and a calculator, if the calculator is used for that specific assessment. But everything else has to be in a locker, in a backpack, in your car.
If it's banned from testing, and that's so important, I think on the other days of the school year, it's just as important. Students are going to keep their phones in their lockers and say they need the bathroom, go get their phone. There have been people caught in compromising positions with cell phones in the bathrooms. That's not something we want. The policy addresses these concerns somewhat, but it doesn't go quite far enough. We need to remove all the excuses, because we know what's best for the kids. We're going to have fewer kids facing depression and anxiety if we put a kibosh on this. And it seems that everybody, including parents, agree that the excessive phone use is detrimental to teenagers. We know about the negative effects on academic performance and mental health, yet as a society, we haven't had the collective will to address the problem. And I don't think this policy addresses that problem.
Director Heil?
So, I want to start off by saying that use of the phones in the bathroom and other private areas is already explicitly banned in this policy. The, I, I don't see a whole lot of value in revisiting this, and it's because, again, this thing has gone through a number of feedback sources, including this board, because Peter presented this as a protocol, with the intention of bringing it forward as a policy eventually. And this board was very supportive of it at the time. It is largely unchanged from that iteration, and my support for it has not changed.
Director Livia Wright?
So, I agree with Mike that, although it was a while ago, this was actually a pretty large discussion, when we put it in place as a guideline. But the other thing that we all need to be cognizant of is, they will be training teachers and doing, they're building admin meetings, pretty much beginning right about when our next meeting is in July. So, if we want this enforced for next school year, the reason it's a discussion item today is so that you can pass it at the July meeting, so that it's in place for the beginning of school, which starts August 1st. So, if you'd like to say we'd like, so, to me, instead of saying, "Well, let's delay putting a policy in place that largely restricts, completely restricts them for K-8, and puts significant restrictions, 912, in place, and makes it policy, so it can be enforced from day one," which anyone who's taught in a classroom knows, that's the best way to do it, is we really need to move this, pass it. And then, if you'd like to see how it goes and review it again in six months, that probably is the better approach.
I might also add to that, if this were passed as is, that doesn't mean we cannot work on it and edit it, or make changes to it, such as, we're also going to make changes to JICDA, the Code of Conduct. And that probably will not be in place by the time the school year starts, so...
Director DiVola?
Sorry, I was in mid-thought. So, in order for this to be in place in August, we would need to vote on it at our July meeting. So, that's going to be an important thing to discuss. I still would be in favor of, like, passing it the way it is, but still also having two board members come along alongside, to see if... board members come along alongside to see if there's any tweaks or things that we could add for potential review for the next year.
You can see, cellphones are very disruptive. But I agree with Director Devola, and I really hope we can get another safety and security presentation done because that really was an excellent presentation. But I want something in place for August, and I would like to add some teeth with some of the other revisions. And I don't see any reason why we can't go back and make changes to this in the future. When it comes to words like banned, that's the only thing that I have a pushback on because we're not teaching any of our older students agency. We're not teaching them consequences. We're saying, you can't have this, which makes sense for younger, underdeveloped brains. But there comes a time, I think, where we have to trust our parents to do what they think is best for their child. Marie and I have both talked about different cellphones where you can restrict the applications that are safer than some of the family plans through the major carriers. But I'm in favor of moving this forward then because I think it's too confusing to the community to start the school year with no policy in place and then move with a bunch of changes. I'd prefer we start with something with expectations right up front, and then there could be revisions done to it later.
I'd also want to discuss the idea of banned, and the reason being, so many of the smartphones these days are used for medical purposes, for heart rate monitors, for diabetes, for a variety of things. And so I'd want to be careful of banning the electronic devices. And so I feel like we've put some pretty strong guardrails in place, but certainly am open to a further discussion and some additional, again, work on the policy in order to bring it back to the board.
Director Devola?
Yeah. I was going to suggest we can still have some input before we vote on this, this next round, and have some suggestions, specific suggestions that we can bring back before we vote on it in July.
Director Schmidt?
I want to know why we waited so long on this. I mean, this is ram and jam, and I don't like that. Medical, of course, of course, there would be exceptions for that, definitely.
So it's been working its way through a variety of focus groups and a variety of read-throughs, different organizations since January.
And where were board members? Were board members part of that at all?
Not to my knowledge.
Board members should be a part. I think we should move forward with using the protocol until we get this hammered out. That's an option as well.
Like I said, this is something that can be revised at a later date, but it has had a lot of input. Director Heil?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly come back to that point about the discretion. I really feel like we should not be micromanaging our staff. So I want to make sure that they have guidance, but that they're, we're not telling them, you know, any violation must lead to a particular step. But also, to the point of board involvement, again, we were all involved in the discussion when it came before us last year. It was basically the same document. And I also want to add too that this has come before me twice because I joined the superintendent at the SKE Lac. I strongly suspect that this came forward at the DAC, and so our, it would have been discussed there.
I can also add in that it was brought before the Student Board of Representatives, and they had a lot of input, and overall, they were in favor of it. They also told us ways that, matter of fact, they said if you were to outright ban it or prohibit it, or if you had the little things where you could put your cellphone in over the door, they talked about dropping burner phones because they said every house has extra cellphones. They were very creative in how they told us how they could defeat it. And so the only question that I have as far as the discretion piece of it is if we take away a phone or if there's a consequent for a student, and we always like to have the differences between the zones, I'm just looking at it from a different perspective. If a parent came up and said, is this enforced consistently throughout the district, what you've done to my child's phone? So those are some of the things I think that we could look at or work on. But I think it's better to have a policy in place at the beginning of the year and not a protocol because a protocol has no teeth, and that this is something that can be amended at a future date. Director Devola?
Yeah, just to be clear, this, I was not aware that we were having this discussion until it was posted in Board Docs. And so not being involved in any of this process is a little, it's a little shocking to me, actually. It's different from the protocol. I knew what the protocol was. So knowing that it was going to become policy, I knew that was coming, but I didn't realize it was coming tonight. Like, there wasn't a specific, hey, we're working on this, we've been working on it since January. We were not informed of that. Second, the DAC never discussed it. It never came before the DAC. I've been to every board meeting, or every DAC meeting this whole school year, and except for one that was canceled because of snow. So I do feel like it, this policy was done outside of the board, and I do have a problem with that. Having said that, we have to have a policy. We cannot go through another year of protocol. So I would still like to have it a little bit stronger, have the enforcement there. And I think administrators would appreciate having support from at least their zone of this is how it's going to work, how this is how it's going to work.
Okay, and our legal counsel wanted to have some input?
Brad Miller speaking. I just wanted to point out that the Communication Devices in Schools Bill, which comes into effect July 1st of 2026 mandates that we have a policy by that date. So we have just a year to get a policy and move from a protocol.
And so Director Livia Wright, did you want to add something?
Just two quick things. One, it says, personal electronic devices that are reasonably suspected of being used or possessed in violation of this policy shall be subject to temporary confiscation. So the things parents get most ticked off about is that their kid's phone gets taken. And this doesn't say maybe, it says shall be. So that expectation's consistent in the policy. But I do think it's important to have a policy in place at the beginning of the school year. I think that's the best way to set it off correctly, and then you can accommodate or change or edit in some way if we need to. But interestingly enough, what came out in this discussion is we actually had two board members who were in the room hearing this discussed. So we actually, it wasn't done with no board awareness, but based on how we have divided up board responsibilities, two board members, because they're part of groups that these things run through, actually did hear it. So I don't think it's fair to describe it as zero board involvement. Okay, we weren't all clued in, but we, A, knew it was down the pike, and B, we did have two board members who heard it.
And just to segue on back at that, she's correct because I was also, in addition to the discussions we had at Student Board of Representatives, I was invited to the community one where they had input throughout the community, but I could not make that one because of work obligations. So Director Livia Wright is correct. There has been board input. Director Schmidt?
I just really think that we should hammer it out, use the protocol to begin with. It's only going to take a month, maybe two. That's what it's been taking, the other districts in the area. I just think we go with the protocol and then get a decent policy.
From what I'm hearing, I think what we, what I'm going to propose is that we move forward with this with the knowledge that we can amend it at a later time. But I want to start the school year with a policy in place with the understanding that it can be updated. Director Devola, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I live and breathe in educational worlds. If you're going to do something, you have to do it at the beginning of the school year, and it has to be in place for that. You can't just change in the middle of a school year, or change a month in, or two months in. It doesn't work. It also has a mind game to it, and you'll get a lot more pushback when you are more lenient to begin with, and then you get harsher in the middle of something. So we do have to have something in place. I would love to be able to make some suggestions between now and July 12th. Is that the date? I think, something like that.
Okay. So for the time being, what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and ask if we can move this forward. And so if I could get your answer on microphone, please?
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, and that is move forward. Next, we are on to item 6.2, Waypoints, Students' Rights and Responsibility Handbook. And Dr. Lamont, I'm understanding that the only change is at this point is the years in this one?
Correct. There were no other changes made to the handbook other than the year for 2526. I just also want to note that based upon requirements around accessibility, this will probably be the last time you will see this as a PDF that's presented this way. This will probably take life within our website on a couple of webpages, so those dates and things will not become an issue as far as having to be updated. We will just notify you whenever we are looking at making updates or changes to the webpages. So it will kind of change a little bit what it looks like, but it will still go through an annual review. But once it's on the website, no changes will occur to it without board approval. And again, that could occur in the middle of the year if something comes down from the legislature, or could occur at this timeframe. Also, my apologies, I understand going back and forth between Microsoft Word and Adobe and whatnot, it condensed a lot of the wording in J I C D A, which again, I'm going to probably pull out of the document and just create a link to the new Board Docs where J I C D A can be, when I say referenced, instead of having to keep it up to date on two different locations, both in Board Docs and on the webpage. So waypoints, as you see it in this form, this is probably not what the final form is going to look like. It will end up on webpages for accessibility reasons.
Okay, Director Schmidt?
Okay, so page three says that waypoints is a guideline. So is the handbook a guideline or mandated rule or policy?
It's a guideline.
It's a guideline, okay. Page four is going to need to be updated to include the new Mission Vision Statement. I'm sure you already know that. Page five has some equity and diversity language that according to Presidential Executive Order 14151, should not be in there. And I just wanted to mention again that on page eight, under Student Responsibilities, the bullet point says that using a smartphone during class is disruptive, which it is.
Thank you.
Director Devola?
Yeah, I have a couple of suggestions for amending. On page three, paragraph two, sentence two, it talks about limiting the rights of students, which is, let me read it. "In support of the latter goal, School District 49 recognizes that the rights of students, including rights to free expression, freedom of religion, and other civil liberties, may be appropriately limited because the school is a special institution." I would like to amend that to say, "In support of latter goal, School District 49 recognizes that the rights of students, including rights to free expression and other civil liberties, may be appropriately limited because the school is a special institution." I don't think we need to sit there and list out everything that's on there. So I would be in favor of that if I could get consensus to take that out.
Consensus, yes. Can you be a little bit clearer on the change of how you want that?
Yes, so instead of saying, "Including rights to free expression, freedom of religion, and other civil liberties may be appropriately limited," we would say, "Including rights to free expression and other civil liberties may be appropriately limited."
So you want to remove freedom of religion?
Correct.
You know, it's kind of interesting if you don't, just of the situation that happened in School District 49 many years ago, where my daughter had a Jewish teacher. And during a discussion, she brought up how they celebrated Hanukkah. And my daughter was really engaged in the discussion. I think she was in the second grade. So she began to share our family's Christmas traditions and was told by the teacher she was not allowed to discuss that. So I actually went on to the ACLJ, and I got a bunch of information on the First Amendment rights of students in a public school setting to include freedom of religion. And I brought that, I met with the principal and with the teacher, and was able to share these documents from the ACLJ. And it was a very productive conversation, so I'm actually not in favor of having that removed, only because I personally experienced it with a second grader who will now turn 30 this year. And so it was an interesting time where that exact situation came up within my family in School District 49. Director Schmidt?
Wait, so...
Oh, go on, Director Devola.
I have a question for you. So you'd be in favor of that second grader not being able to share? You're confusing me.
It doesn't say that they can't share. It says limited. So Director Livia Wright?
So for example, there is, someone is Wiccan, and at lunchtime, they decide to have a Wiccan ceremony at their lunch table with their peers. That is something that can be limited. So there was a situation, you know, that a school can say, mm, this is becoming disruptive because another kid is, or... So it applies to all faiths, but it is also, it's saying that in specific circumstances, there may be an appropriate way to limit. And I think listing it, naming it explicitly says, hey, if something is becoming disruptive to the student environment, because we're a special institution, you had these, some of these things are limited, and I think leaving it there lets them still do that, right? So because a parent showing up with tarot cards at lunchtime would not be something that you would necessarily want your second grader participating in, it lets them limit that equally to the person who insists that they must read scripture out to their peers when maybe their peers have asked them not to. So in both cases, the school could say, mm, you can have a space to do that in, but we can limit it as well when it is disrupting what our educational environment is. I think that's kind of the point of this. It isn't to say you have no freedom of it, because I guarantee you, there's all kinds of faith-based discussions going on among our students all the time, having kids who are in our schools. But it also let, gives, identifies it as one of those. I don't know why you wouldn't list it. Because when you say, "and other civil liberties," and you're removing those three words, it's not saying they're not going to. It's just them pretending they can't. And so I think leaving it there, saying, yes, they can, they can explicitly limit all of these things as special institutions is probably appropriate.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
So Jamie Lynn, while I actually do really appreciate where you're trying to go with this, I know that I've had to litigate sharing of tarot cards at a lunchroom. And in an instance like that, if we too much circumscribe the school's right to protect other students from these expressions, we run into problems. And so I would either prefer that you leave the full clause in there, or if you're going to pull it out at all, you're going to pull out free expression as well as freedom of religion and just say civil liberties. Because to list one and then not others sort of overtly excludes that other one, and it makes it harder to sort of effectuate our policies.
And just to follow up with what happened with my second grader is the principal, Annie Huretz, said that when the teacher introduced the discussion of Hanukkah, she could not then shut down discussions of other people's beliefs. So she ended up saying, and it was an educational moment for all involved, but it was because the teacher introduced a topic about her particular faith that it opened the door to other people sharing some of their traditions. Director Schmidt?
There is nowhere in here that says the word disruption anywhere. So I don't know where that's coming from.
Well, burning the flag is a protected First Amendment right, but I don't want any of our students doing it because I think that would definitely be a disruption.
I think it's said in the affirmative in the sense that the school may place reasonable time manner and place restrictions to protect the unique... So it's about just saying that we can monitor and limit those expressions, and that's the way it's being done. we can monitor and limit those expressions, and that's the way it's being stated here.
So, we're limiting freedom of religion or free expression and freedom of religion?
In my real-world experience, having a student bring tarot cards out and begin to proselytize, so to speak, their peers with, you know, readings of these tarot cards was an expression of religion that was disruptive. And so, it was incumbent on us to be able to say, "You know what? No, the cafeteria leader can restrain you from doing that in that context."
And the limited freedom of expression means a student can be removed from class for saying "explicative you, explicative, explicative" to their teacher. That's freedom of expression anywhere else. It can be limited in a classroom because we have a policy. You can stand on a street corner and scream that sentence. You can put it on a poster and hold it at board members, all you want, as we walk in and out. You best not call my student's teacher that, because yes, your happy butt will be marched out of the classroom, and you'll be in the principal's office, and we can suspend you because you don't get that freedom of expression in the classroom. So, yes, we limit those things, and you are allowed to in a school to make sure you're promoting the environment that will allow learning to occur. And that has been true since we were kids. In fact, they didn't even bother to say, "We can limit it in a policy." They just hauled your butt out and called your parents, and your parents made sure it ain't never going to happen again, right? But, in our, in this environment, and there are plenty of other environments where, in fact, we restrict that, right? Workplace people are restricted. So, we're training our kids in your workplace. Some of these rights are restricted. In the military, you sign all of them away. But, yeah, that's true. We 100% restrict students' freedom of expression in some ways to ensure that the learning environment's appropriate.
We actually prayed in schools.
And, well, real quick, Director Schmidt, because Director Heil has not had an opportunity to speak, but I was just going to add on, I think even a president can drop an F-bomb, and I think a previous vice president did the same. But, I don't want our students doing it. Director Heil?
Yeah. And it's one of those things, this is in there because of existing case law. And so, that's why we're referring to it. And it's worth bringing the attention of our parents to it when they see this document. We have, most of the time when we have these limitations on rights, it's because there's a collision with another right. And so, our students do have a right to a free and appropriate public education. And so, anything that interferes with their access to that, that has to be limited in some way. So, for the same reason, we can't have a student, you know, on a prayer mat chanting in the middle of instruction time. We can't have somebody doing yoga in the front of the room during instruction time. We can't have somebody, you know, singing Christmas carols at the front of the room in instruction time. So, that's why this is there. I wanted to bring up a separate point, though, because it's still in the document for this year for our approval. And I just wanted to have the conversation in the JICDA Code of Conduct and in the Use of Technology, there were a couple of references to things like, you know, plagiarism and things like that. And I feel like that there's a gap that we're not addressing, and that is authorized use of artificial intelligence. And so, I sent some comments to Nancy about possible adjusting those, understanding that if we're going to make those edits, we're also going to have to bring JICDA in front of us to edit that, too. And the responsible use of technology, is that a policy?
Yes, it is.
So, we would have to update that, too?
I don't, I am not the holder of that policy. I think it's held by, it's probably held by the business office, because IT is under the business office. So, sorry, I'm running through my brain right here. I am not the holder of that policy. But, there is a policy about internet usage and appropriate internet usage within the school and on the school's internet.
So, I'm just wondering if the board agrees that those are worth addressing, and we can ask to have those policies brought forward with edits for votes as well?
Yes.
Director Devola, did you want to? Oh, I thought, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Page five, bottom of, the bottom line, the value of all people. I would like to suggest an edit to that one as well. It says, "We value all people by putting our values of care and respect into action through strategic initiatives that promote equity, respect diversity, and celebrate the contributions of all." And that could get us in some hot water by having those words in there. So, I would like to revise it to say, "We value all people by respecting and celebrating everybody's individual worth and contributions." Can I get a second on that revision?
Second. I think that is a good update. My only concern, and that's one that I definitely support, this will be the fourth time the handbook has come forward before the board that during the time that Jamie Lynn and I have been on it. And I always like robust discussion. And this will be translating into a webpage. And once again, to have something in place before the end of the school year, but I do support that change to value all people.
Can I get a consensus on that?
Can we, isn't that pulled from somewhere? Because that's a definition of a rock. So, isn't that pulled from somewhere? Somewhere else? Like, this is a document that pulls a whole bunch of stuff from a whole bunch of policies.
I would have to go back and look if it's in Policy AD or...
It's, yeah, or they, right. It's, there's somewhere that that definition comes from. Right. But, there's still somewhere where we have those rocks, right? So...
That's also on the website. The website has the rocks.
The strategic plan.
Right. So, I just, we're starting to kind of get into the weeds. If we want to come back and review it, my suggestion would be, let's find where that is and go back and have a more robust discussion on that. Leave it as is for right now. Equity in education means something different than necessarily what you all are going after.
Yeah. And she's correct, especially for special education, where it can have, you know, assistive technology or something that they have equity in learning opportunities, not the way...
We're just trying to remove buzzwords at this point. So, I think...
Director, hold on.
That would be equitable education.
It's on the website. Mr. Miller said, under About D49.
Director Schmidt, did you have something else?
It appears not to be a policy, just, it's just on the About page. So, someone wrote that, someone?
Right. But, I'm wondering if it's when they formally voted on that rock. Right. And I wasn't on the board, I don't think, when that was added.
It's not clear, but that's the only place it shows up.
And so, I think before we start kind of getting too far in the weeds on that one, Peter would know the history, and he'd be able to give us more information. I don't think you're going to get nailed by anybody for having those words in there, because educationally, they can apply in many different ways.
Director Devola?
Yeah. So, then I would like to have consensus to task administration to research where this came from, so that we can change it.
Yes.
No.
Director Livia Wright?
I don't have any problem with researching it. I think we're going a little too far into the weeds.
Yes.
Editing tiny words out. So, I'm in no...
Yes. Okay. It sounds like we have a consensus to look into it. And on this one with the handbook, once again, we have to have something in place, and it's something that if we wanted to make changes, could be done at a different time. Can I get a consensus to move this forward to the next meeting?
No.
Director Devola, you had one more thing, and then we really got to...
Yep. Page seven, bullet point one. This is going to be directed more towards Mr. Miller. Is there a way for us to, instead of listing all of the protected classes, to just say, "Of the students' protected class classifications, period?" Or do we have to actually list every single protected class?
It's seven?
Page seven, bullet point one.
Oh. Student, under student rights. Thank you.
Interestingly, thank you for the question. Interestingly, this doesn't actually capture all of the current listed protected classes. And that is not an evergreen sort of thing as our legislature's been pretty proactive in expanding those protected classes. So, we've had some discussions, Jamie Lynn, in the past about the, optimally, you've listed these, and there's a implied good faith aspect to having, you know, declared that you're protecting these classes. And I've rendered the opinion in the past that to say something like, regardless of a student's protected classification, is more or less adequate. I think frankly, having an incomplete list is worse than having a generic statement. So, it's one, I think either we need to augment this and add gender expression and pregnancy status and all the different things that aren't listed, or else to say what you've done, which is to just say generically.
So, do you think state and federal protected, or just leaving it to state? Because sometimes there's a conflict, and we could have a robust discussion on the Tenth Amendment. But, in the meantime...
You could say applicable protected classes or something like that, I suppose.
So, then can I get consensus to, instead of listing all of them, to just say, "Applicable protected classes."
Director Heil?
So, I prefer listing them all out. And the reason is because I don't think that every person reading this document would immediately know what is meant by protected classes. And when they see them being listed out, then that makes it much more clear.
And I think if we put, as defined by the state, can encourage them to look up to what is protected by the state. So...
Yeah. I'm not in favor of sending our families home with homework.
Okay. And so, there was a suggestion made under that bullet point to change, instead of having a partial list, which we have received legal advice, that can be problematic. I also see a problem with anything else added, because since I've been on the board, I think hairstyles and even hats have been added, that we just, if we protect ourselves more by changing it to protected classes in the verbiage recommended by our legal counsel. Can I get a vote consensus?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Okay. Can we move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And that will be moved forward for action at the regular July meeting. And finally, now we are on to Honor Charter School, a Marzano Academy presentation. And thank you for being here and...
Thank you.
...being patient.
All right. Well, hey, good evening, members of the board, Dr. Lamont, Mr. Miller. Good to see you again. And for those who I have not yet met, I'm Todd Marzano. And on behalf of everybody on our team, I just want to say, we are very excited and grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight to share our proposal for opening Honor Charter School in District 49. I'm joined tonight by my father, Dr. Robert Marzano. He's the founding member of our steering committee, as well as the founding member of Marzano Academies, which is going to be our school's educational support organization. Also here is Dr. Paul Wright, the director of operations for Marzano Academies, and Mr. Patrick Bozalay, our partner with Highmark School Development. And you're probably aware that Highmark is one of our nation's leading independent facility developers for charter schools. And Patrick's going to provide you just with a brief overview of our facilities plan to ensure that we're able to successfully open our doors for the 27-28 school year. And speaking of our school, this slide here shows you just a quick snapshot of our growth plan, as well as our enrollment numbers on the right-hand column. We plan to open as a K through 5, and then we are going to add a grade level each year to get to eighth grade.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but nothing's been broadcasting to these screens, which didn't matter until now because nothing was being presented. It was all just a single document. But, when he's, we can't see, he can't advance a slide for us to then see because nothing's on these screens here.
So, give us just a minute. You can see behind us, but we don't have that here yet.
We can't see anything. There's nothing here. These aren't done or whatever.
Technical difficulties.
Yeah. There hasn't been anything the whole meeting, but this is the first presentation where that matters.
And thank you for your patience, whether you have it or not. We got it. Okay.
All right. Yeah. So, again, this was a snapshot of our growth plan for the first four years of operation. The right-hand column there shows our enrollment numbers. We'll start as a K through 5, and the plan is to add a grade level each year to get up to eighth grade. The vision for our school is to ensure that all students are properly equipped to be highly successful members of society and experience joy and satisfaction in life. And we will accomplish that through our mission of utilizing Dr. Robert Marzano's highly coordinated, personalized, competency-based education system to ensure that all students achieve academic success and develop a sense of honor and agency. And speaking of Dr. Marzano, I believe most of you here are aware of his work. He's been a leading researcher in the field of education for over 50 years, has written more than 60 books, and has generated extraordinary results in countless schools across our nation, to include a partnership relationship with Johnny Flynn, which is a K through 8 school up in Westminster, Colorado. But, all that said, it's always been his dream to open up his own charter school using his proven educational model to positively impact the students in the community it serves, which, again, is why we are here this evening. So, without further ado, it is my privilege to introduce to you Dr. Robert Marzano.
Thanks, Doc. Met with members of the board, and Dr. Lamont and Mr. Miller. Thanks for having us. We're very honored. The, I want to emphasize that this proposal is really two bodies of work coming together. One is my 50-plus years in K-12 education, trying to put research and theory together, you know, into practice. But, then what Todd left out is his 30 years in the military. So, he just retired from 30 years as an naval officer. And actually, when he retired, we estimated that during that 30 years, we had seen each other less than 100 days. And that's because he was deployed seven different times, flew off aircraft carriers 800 times, you know, way too much combat, way too many sleepless nights for relatives at home. And then he spent 10 years commanding ships. He was a commanding officer of an amphibious assault ship named USS Arlington. He was second-in-command of the USS Nimitz and the, shoot, it's Lincoln. I'm sorry, USS Lincoln. And then his final command was the newest naval, the newest nuclear carrier in the world, the USS Kennedy. And so, it's very, yes, yeah, he deserved, yeah. It's very, you know, amalgamation of those two worlds. And that's why it's named Honor. That's the first, that's the lead, Honor Charter School. And the whole idea is that those ideals, respect, integrity, discipline, teamwork, courage, won't just be words on a wall. You know, they'll be the ethos of the entire K-12, excuse me, K-8 experience. And interestingly, that, those terms came from his command. They were translated into what good sailors should do. It translates easily into what good teachers should do and what good students should do. And it's not just military. It's, you know, we're trying to honor all first responders, you know, and the like. So, that's, that's, that's an important message, probably as important, if not more important, than the academic side of things. The academic side of things has taken me over five decades to develop. I'm not going to go into any detail. We gave you a little present, whether you like it or not. Sorry, if you're interested, you might look at that. I've been told it's very informative, but very boring, too. So, you've been forewarned in terms... So you've been forewarned in terms of, but if you have any questions about specifics, we'd be happy to answer. The driving force in terms of the educational side is 16, what we call level school level indicators. You can see in there, the book explains all 16. Some things are just traditional education. There are some really cutting-edge things there too that have been developed over the years. They all fit together too, because they've been built by myself and colleagues. They're designed so every piece fits with every other piece. Another big component of the instructional model is a high reliability perspective. And that really came from, you know, his world more than mine. High reliability organizations like air traffic control, oh gosh, the power grid, you know, they've operated this way for years. So as the military, years ago, we developed a model that schools could use. And actually, some of your schools here in District 49 are participating, you know, in that school version of it. I had the opportunity to meet some of your educators at a conference we did in San Antonio, gosh, last January, I believe. There's a very detailed instructional model. Now, oh, by the way, one thing I want to mention, everything we do in the academy, if we're so lucky enough to be able to open a charter here, everything is available to any school in the district. If they want to learn how we do any one of those 16 things, welcome to it. We'll provide, you know, professional development for that. Same thing with the instructional model, very detailed, very granular instructional model, designed from the research on expertise, development of expertise, lot of feedback, lot of granular feedback to teachers. You can use this or not use it. If you're interested, we know, we'll help you do that district-wide or school-wide. Real centerpiece for us is what we call proficiency scales. We've been developing these over years. And this makes, this makes the curriculum completely transparent to students, you know, to parents, et cetera, et cetera. This happens to be fifth grade mathematics. And so fifth grade mathematics has about 20 topics with proficiency scales. So when I say transparency, fifth grade parents will be sent the 20 proficiency scales at the beginning of the year to say, this is what fifth grade mathematics looks like, you know, in this charter school. So they can support their students, see where they are, help them when there are missing components. As I say, you've got this in the book. As I say, the pieces and parts have been designed to go together. They work very well. In terms of teacher development, that's a big part of it. It's not easy teacher development. We actually, over the years, I've created a teacher evaluation system. And the teacher evaluation system is actually one of the hardest in the country. Sometimes teachers don't like it because it's hard, but it was designed to be hard because, not difficult, I shouldn't say it that way. It was designed to help people develop. And you don't develop expertise in a complex field like education without very, very specific and very honest feedback. So I think you'll find all 16 areas will kind of have that tone to it, you know, granular, designed to help people get better. It's a very much of a team effort and a big part of our team is Highmark. And so without further ado-
Okay. Click advance, okay. My name is Patrick Bozalay with Highmark School Development. I'm the VP at Highmark. And as Todd mentioned, we are an independent national developer of charter school facilities. We do this around the country. We've been doing it since '08. Over 100 charter school facility developments, some of those right here in Colorado, including Ben Franklin Academy, Colorado Military, Loveland Classical, that was what we would call an adaptive reuse, Prospect Ridge, Parker Performing Arts. Some of these were new from the ground up on fresh dirt. It's what we do. We're independent, we're not married to a management company, we don't take a seat on a board. We're officially agnostic as to school program. You name a school program, we've probably done them all. This will be the first Marzano Academy with high reliability and whatnot. But we just get them their building affordably and we get out of the way. It's truly what we do. And if this board approves the charter application, we will take good care of this team on one of the heaviest lists they're going to have, which is the facility. So right now, everything real estate-wise is on the table until it's not. Some things come and go. We're looking at standing buildings, we're looking at dirt. And that said, I think this is showing up front. Todd and I talked about this. I thought the most helpful thing might be where we are in the process. We're kind of at a Goldilocks moment. We are not compressed for time. It is not luxurious yet, but we are acting with great urgency on the facility because Dr. Marzano said some people have described his book or his book as informative but kind of boring. Real estate can be kind of boring, but we got to be informed. It's tough, 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 tough. And we are talking, we are texting, we are in constant contact. So here's what we are looking at today. Look at each month or span is kind of the latest, what we envision today. We hope to accelerate this in an appropriate manner, but not without, we cannot make mistakes, so we got to do it right. My dad is a high school shop teacher. He said, you either get it done fast or you get it done right. We're going to do this right and it's going to take the time you see up there. So that's all I've got. I see 45 seconds left, so let's step back.
All right, yep. I think that concludes our presentation. Obviously, we'll turn it over to you at this point for any questions, comments you may have.
Director Heil?
Yeah, so I see that it's coming before us in a vote, as a vote in July 2025. That is going to be for the charter application, correct? When will we see the charter application?
If the board moves this forward, I'm assuming we'll have that by the July 12th or haven't you already prepared the charter application?
Yeah, the charter application has been submitted. So I think that's perhaps an internal process. I'm not sure exactly when that will be delivered to the board.
So we can find out and I can let you know, Director Livia Wright, you had a question too, or Brad?
So Brad speaking, they've gone through their capacity interview, they've gone through all of the diligence in terms of our internal teams doing things. I'm not aware, you know, I'm external, so I don't know how things are going in terms of you getting the document and so forth. But we will have obtained the DAC review and all of the recommendations in advance of a vote. And it should be very soon that you get this stuff and I'll push.
And typically, in prior application processes, what happens is they come and do a presentation at this meeting where we ask them questions. Then at the next meeting, when it's brought for action, admin comes, the whole application is in there and admin gives their recommendation for approval, conditional approval or denial at that time. And they do their presentation on a separate day. That I, in the multiple that I approved over the eight years I was on previously, that's always been the process. So that all of the internal people and the DAC people have all reviewed it and we get that as a secondary packet after they've done their presentation.
Director DiVola, you were going to add something about DAC?
Yes, it has already gone before the DAC, so I do know that.
Director Schmidt?
So I like the transparency and the sharing aspect of this. I do wish I would have had this a little bit earlier. I could have looked it over and had some good questions for you. I have no questions because I haven't looked at it yet. So, but thank you for being here.
And I would encourage the board as you go through this, that if we could have a contact where they could even submit questions, that would be awesome. So that's something that I can have Lynette get out to you. And Mike, you wanted to finish something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, on the sixth page of your document here, where you've got all the, you know, the honor charter school and the various patriotic pictures and stuff like that, I just wanted to point out as a former sailor myself, I know that you have two of the three core values here, honor and courage. And I'm wondering what happened to commitment?
Nice.
But one, one final question I had for you. My understanding is that the Power Zone has implemented the Marzano model. And so just from an innovation perspective, what is the additional benefit that bringing a Marzano Academy into the district provides?
Sure. The, in the Power Zone, those schools, they've implemented the high reliability school process. That doesn't have those 16 school level indicators embedded. The high reliability school process is really kind of agnostic in terms of the programs, but it has levels. First level is a safe supportive and collaborative culture. Second level is effective teaching in every classroom. Now, we don't tell them what to do for safe supportive and culture or what teaching model to use. With the academy, for each one of those things, we say, it's one of these 16 things. So that's the difference that, yeah, did that answer it?
Yes, it did, thank you.
Director Livia Wright?
Yeah, they use the HRS and have been doing it for well over a decade because that was put in, I think, within two years when Mike came as the director, he did that. But I think the difference is this part of it, correct?
Oh, yes, yeah.
So you refer to personalized competency-based education. Can you tell me what that means?
Sure. Not quickly, but I'll try. The, in a traditional system, you advance by age. So at a certain age, you're first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade. In a competency-based system, age doesn't stop you from going to higher levels and it doesn't automatically move you to the next level. So a competency-based system is one in which you can advance more quickly than your age or more slowly than your age. But there's no one way to do it. There's absolutely not one way to do it. Every competency-based system will have its own nuances. I mean, there are, you know, there are more difficult ways and simpler ways. Can I add a little?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. I mean, there are, I mean, here's why I bring it up. It might be that, let's say we're so lucky that we can start a charter here that, so there'll be some schools who say, we like some of this, but not all of it. Well, great. And even in terms of how to have a competency-based system, start, here's a competency-based system. You still have your grade levels. I'm still a first grader, second grader, et cetera, et cetera, and I stay at that. And however, the topics that I'm supposed to master for fifth grade math are identified ahead of time. They don't have to be proficiency scales, but let's say they are. Now, first grading period, first quarter, you cover one-fourth of those proficiency scales, okay? And each student has a score on each one that's translated in an overall, you know, A, B, C, D, F, very traditional. But what students also have an opportunity to do is go back and raise their scores on previous topics. So now the second quarter, you introduce new topics, you know, and at the end of that quarter is an overall grade. But now it's based on the ones you did that quarter and the ones, but the students can still go back and raise, are you following me? That's a form of competency-based education, which looks very traditional. You don't change the report card, you know, overall omnibus grade, but still students have had a chance to, you know, make sure that they've, you know, and raise their scores. Next level up would be they have to raise some scores. You say, out of these, you know, 20 topics, you don't go on to sixth grade unless you master these 12. And next level up would be, okay, you can not only do that, but if you want to start working on higher level mathematics, you can. That's what I mean, there's no one way to do it. So we have a very specific way. So the charter school will say, this is the way we do it. But other schools might say, okay, we want to make this twist and, you know, and we have the experience to help people do that. Did that help?
Oh, yeah, I'm, so very much like mastery is another term that gets used, mastery level learning. So my follow-up question then is, so how does that then impact elementary level students who have developmental reading or math disorders in terms of how they progress through your system?
Well, they still have proficiency scales, but they might have an IEP. So the topic and the scale would be, you know, meet their specific needs. Very transparent again. If a student meets those, they can always still go higher. So there's no limit on them. And my personal bias is I'd rather, you know, push students to say, well, let's try it at the next level, let's try it at the next level.
Okay, so, but I guess more specifically to kind of give an example. So if I have, and I have experience kind of as a combination of a parent and a teacher, as a parent as well. So I had a kid with a developmental reading disorder who is in that 3% that never got above a second grade reading level. If she was required to go through a system that didn't ever expose her beyond second grade because she didn't meet that second grade competency, she would not have developed. Her, she still reads at a second grade level as a 22-year-old. Her vocabulary and her ability to orally understand and learn, however, was age-appropriate. So they'd test her vocabulary in 10th grade and she had 10th grade vocabulary. She had 10th grade understanding in history. She couldn't read the history book. She's in that couple of percent that regardless of the fact that she received a heck of a lot of research-based support and instruction, she's in that small percent where that is a pervasive developmental disorder. How does your system support those students to ensure that they continue to develop? What do you do with that student in your system? Because you said it's not age-based progression. What happens if that kid hits that wall in your system?
Well, see, the system built into the system are proficiency scales, which are at a very, very granular level. Traditionally, you just mentioned it, she reads at a sec, what'd you say?
Second grade.
Except that's based on, based on an assessment, a certain type of assessment that they called a reading assessment, which might not be a complete, you know, an accurate measure of whether they can comprehend and read, you know? So the proficiency-
Well, I guarantee she can't read it. Because I've sat with her, but she can understand. If it's read to her, that girl understands. So I guess-
And I think Director DiVola had a comment she wanted to make, I'm sorry. Director DiVola?
Say that again. You say she's-
I mean, I can guarantee you that it's not just the, like, I can sit next to my daughter and tell you she can't read that.
What is it, but you said she can understand it.
But she can, so, but if it's read to her-
Okay.
-100% understands the material, can give it back to you, she can orally take a test and answer it correctly. It's, she's in that 2% that even though she had all of the interventions for the district plus private intervention plus an SLP plus, and so my question is, what have you built in your system to ensure that those kids aren't held back by those piece, that piece?
No, she wouldn't be held back.
Director DiVola, did you want to add something into that?
So students on IEP need specialized learning and specialized being able to go from different levels and things. The beauty of charter schools is that there's different charter schools for different needs of different kids. And so this particular school may or may not have exactly what Marie Livia Wright's daughter might have needed. The beauty of that is it's a school of choice. So I believe it's very important that we have charter schools to have other, to have options and to be able to let parents choose the best school for their kids depending on what their kids' needs are. So that's extremely important. That doesn't mean that there's not going to be students with IEPs in the school. There obviously are. There's IEP students in all of schools. And to the best of their ability, they're able to accommodate those kids at that level. So I think there's a differentiation there between-
Legally, they have to. So legally, legally, they're, so they have to be able to provide the same special education that Falcon Elementary does.
Only if they are provided the funds in order to support those students. Yes, that is true.
Can I just, I think, I think-
I'm not opposed to your school, I'm just making sure that I would like to ensure that you were thinking through these things.
No, 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 believe me. But I think, it sounds like you're coming from the perspective that on a charter, we'll say, here are the 20 things in reading, and if you don't pass all of them, you don't move on. That's not the way we run it. It sounds like with your daughter, what happened is, well, this is an area she's not developing, but in the grand scheme of comprehension, she's doing well. She will, no, that, I don't operate that way. So they'll actually, I think, facilitate, you know, her progress, his or her progress through a system because we're not going to, you know, say, you don't have this one thing. That's kind of the danger of a competency-based system where it's rigid, you know, I think it's one of-
Correct, that's why I was asking the question. I wanted to ensure it's on the radar because we do have that obligation.
You have picked up a real trap in competency-based education. No, there's all of them here, you know, you have to pass everyone or you don't, you don't move up. And that, that, that can create real havoc, you know?
And I really have always appreciated your advocacy, especially for students with special needs. I wanted to make sure we have time, if other directors have any other questions or if Brad wanted to weigh in on this or Dr. Lamont?
I just wanted to say I was part of the competency hearing-
I just wanted to say, I was part of the competency hearing with the Marzano group that provided a bunch of information, as we asked a bunch of questions. And my understanding, again, with the responses, and you'll get this information at the next meeting, was that they are aware of the requirements under the IDEA and the Exceptional Children's Education Act and 504 and CLDE. So they're, they're very much aware of that. We have said that we would like to work more closely with their administrative team whenever that is selected. But that's beyond the board approving the charter and having us move forward with the relationship and beginning, again, to tease out some of these things. So again, the team is very much aware of their requirements and obligations under the IDEA and under exceptional children's and a variety of other state and federal laws, so.
Thanks, Dr.
Are there other questions from the board? Okay, well, if there's no objection, can we move this forward to the next meeting? Can I have you on microphone?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Okay, we will move this on to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And we are on to item 6.4, STAR end-of-year presentation.
Do you pull that down, or do you want me to take that down?
I got it.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. Christina Tiernan, the coordinator of math performance. Happy summer. I'm here to talk to you about our end-of-year STAR performance. We're going to take a look mostly at proficiency. Our first slide is, we're looking at our state benchmark. We had approximately